Could everyone please take a seat? We're about to reconvene for our public hearing. Thank you very much. A good evening and welcome to the second of two public hearings for the 2023-2024 budget. We are here tonight to review the proposed property tax rates and budget for the 2023-2024 school year. We're here to hear comments from the public and approve the proposed millage rates and budget. The order of business and actions taken tonight must follow specific directions set forth in the state statute, and we ask for your cooperation as we go through this legally required format. There will be two opportunities for you to speak this evening. First, you may comment on the proposed millage rates. Second, you may comment on the proposed budget. If you wish to speak, you must register separately for each part of the hearing with our staff member at the entrance of the boardroom. On behalf of the school board and superintendent, I thank each of you for taking the time to be here tonight and to share your views with all of us. At this time, I would like to entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
Make a motion.
A motion by Mrs. Long.
Second.
And a second by Mrs. Peters. Mr. Hendrick and staff, would you like to introduce the budget?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I welcome the public to our second and final of two public hearings on the 23-24 millage rates and district budget. I want to thank the board members for their interest and work with staff over the course of the last several months in formulating this work for the 23-24 school year. As you know, this millage rate and the budget are directly tied to our district's strategic plan, and as we consider the millage tonight, one of the things that's in our online version of the millage rate and the plan is a historical perspective going back to 1970 on millage rates in Pinellas County. And tonight's overall rate is the lowest of any of those years since 1970, including the lowest rate for the required local effort. I want to thank our citizens who have supported our local referendum since 2005, which is part of this millage rate to support teacher salaries in Pinellas County schools. So with that, I'll pass it to Mr. Smith for the introduction of the budget, the millage rate, and his staff to present it to the public and our board.
Thank you, Mr. Hendrick. And you stole my factoid about the millage rate. Appreciate that. Tonight, this is the second and final public hearing, as mentioned, on the district millage and budget. The format and order of tonight's hearing presentations are prescribed by Chapter 200 Florida statutes and must follow a specific order. The material available at the first public hearing in August provided comparative information relative to the projected fiscal year closeout. The 23-24 fiscal year has been closed, and the actual results are reflected in the second public hearing documents. We are all experiencing the effects of inflation. The district is also subject to those inflationary pressures. We have experienced increases in energy and fuel costs, increased materials and supply costs, as well as increases in maintenance and construction costs. In addition, we will incur increased costs for our employee health insurance, as well as an increase in the required contribution to the Florida retirement system of approximately $9 million this coming year. All of these factors and more present challenges when formulating this budget. We will continue to examine our budget to maximize the effectiveness of the spending decisions we make, as well as to continue to strive to maximize the increase in the salaries of our employees. At this time, Ms. Samantha Chastain, manager of budget FTE and cost reporting, will first present the millages, followed by Ms. Lorraine Jordan, executive director of budget, will present the budget.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, and good evening, Mr. Hendrick, Madam Chair, board members and staff. Truth in Millage, also referred to as TRIM, requires school districts to advertise their proposed budget and millage rates annually. The district's 2023-24 millage is comprised of the general operating millage, which includes the required local effort discretionary and local referendum.
That's what I was looking at.
The Florida Department of Education determines the maximum state-required local effort millage rate that must be levied by the school board to generate its local share of funding for the district. The local referendum of .5 mil was initially approved by the voters in 2005 and '06 and was approved for the fifth time in 2020-21 for a four-year period. The proposed millage also includes the 1.5 mils for capital outlay. A mil refers to the rate of property tax commonly paid on the assessed value of homes and business properties. A mil equates to $1 of taxes for every $1,000 of taxable property value. The rolled-back rate is the millage rate that would generate the same amount of revenue as last year if applied to the current tax roll after adjusting for new construction. The 2023-24 proposed millage of 5.938 is higher than the rolled-back rate by 10.87%. Pinellas County's gross property tax value of approximately $140 billion is an increase from last year's value by $15.2 billion or 12.2%. The proposed millage rate for 2023-24 of 5.938 represents an overall decrease of .42% when compared to the 2022-23 total millage rate of 5.963. Excuse me. The required local effort millage has decreased by .78%. The property tax revenue comparison reflects an increase in revenue of $83.7 million over last year's proceeds. This is the result of an increase in our property tax value. The required local effort proceeds are increasing by about $43.5 million, and the proposed discretionary millage will generate about $10.9 million more. The referendum will yield an additional $7.3 million, and the capital outlay millage will generate $21.9 million more than last year. Under the proposed rate, the owner of a $200,000 home after the deduction of $25,000 homestead exemption will pay $1,039.15 in school taxes. This averages out to $2.85 per day. The taxable value of property in Pinellas County reflects an increase on average of 12.2% this year, for the year, excuse me. The Florida legislature has set our required local effort, also referred to as RLE, to 3.19, which is a decrease from the prior year's RLE of 3.215. Some homeowners may experience an increase in their school taxes, as demonstrated here, as a result of an increase in property value and not an increase to our levied millage rate. Please note that this example does not consider the benefit of our 3% save our homes cap. The RLE is an appropriated amount set by the FLDOE. The school board must levy this amount in order to receive state funding. It is used for the day-to-day operations such as school staff and utilities. The discretionary millage is used for the general operations of the district and to meet additional costs due to inflation. Local referendum funds are used to recruit and retain quality teachers, preserve reading, art, and music programs, and provide up-to-date textbooks and technology. The capital outlay millage is the district's primary funding source for maintenance, renovations, new construction, and equipment as advertised on July 30th. At this time, I will turn the meeting back to the board chair to allow for a public comment and for the motions necessary to adopt the millage rate.
Thank you very much. First, we have a motion, and a second to adopt the agenda. All those in favor of adopting the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, now we will move forward with, maybe have a motion? Or do we need public speakers prior to the motion? Are there any public speakers for agenda item number five?
Yes, Madam Chair, board members. Mr. Hendrick, we have four speakers for item five. The first two are Andrea Dort and Mark Clutho.
Good evening. My name is Andrea Dort. Thank you, Madam Chair, and the school board, Superintendent Hendrick, and staff. The millage rate increase, I just want to support the increase. The millage rate increase is based on the state allowable increases to support the pay for our labor unions increasing. Obviously, I would encourage the increases so PCTA could benefit an average pay increase of 7.3%, which is the average increase of the cost of living locally. So again, I support the highest possible increase of the millage rate because it is tied to our strategic plan, and we need to support an increase in our teacher and support staff salary and benefit. Thank you.
This is a doggone shame. Strategic word never should be used here. Capital outlay, $202 million. Oh, that's bad, really bad. Here we have a heat index over 100 degrees. The air conditioning just cranking away. You're wearing coats. Now how ridiculous is that? You know, that means you buy more air conditioning. You know, there can't be rational thinking here. You're not gonna, you're not going to arrive at some kind of smart millage rate when you can't even get the uniform of the day right. I mean, that's pure absurdity. Just listen to it go. You know, at our house, the thermostat is set at 79 degrees. We're not wearing coats. yeah, I just heard, you know, you, the teachers want to get better paid? Well, you need, you need to have some rational thinking. But this increase in millage, you know, this is highway robbery. And you're talking about $202 million for capital outlay for more stupid buildings? So the end result is the U.S. sets a record for billion-dollar weather disasters? And hurricane shatters weather rules? That's the results.
The next two speakers are Bronson Ochoff and Sarah Peacock.
Hi, good evening. Happy to be here with you tonight, and I wanted to take another opportunity to talk to you about the tax millage rate. I was here last month, and I'll just really quickly sum up. I talked about, you know, it's an $83 million increase, which is 11.7%. And I also talked about the, excuse me, I talked about the cumulative effect, whereas that was on top of a $72 million increase last year. And so over the last two years, we've increased the taxes by $156 million. And if you divided that evenly among all the residents of Pinellas County, it'd be about $161 per person. So I wanted to talk a little bit more about that because, you know, sometimes the argument is that we, we need the, we need the extra taxes to pay for teacher salaries. And I support teacher salaries, and I think we need to increase them. But I don't think that the data lines up with what our objective is. We're trying to increase the taxes to pay for the teachers, but I don't think it shows up. And the Bible actually tells us that, you know, we have to be faithful with the, you know, one who is faithful with little can be entrusted to be faithful with much. And I don't think so far that we've been faithful with the tax increases that we've asked for versus, you know, what we've asked for previously versus what we're getting now. So I wanted to go back about four years. And in my review of that data, I looked at the taxes back then were about $586 million. That's what we levied four years ago. And so, you know, we're looking at 212 more million to get to where we're at currently at 799. So, but when you look at the teacher salaries, if you were a veteran teacher back four years ago, so you were in service for 10 years, your salary would have been about $48,000. Well, so now if you fast forward to last year, you would have been a 13-year teacher, and your salary would have only been $54,000. So that's only an increase of $6,000 over those four years. That's only a 12.6% increase. So the increases in the taxes aren't lining up with what we're saying that we need to increase the money for. And the cum, I, I don't think we really take into consideration the cumulative effect of these overall tax increases. You know, it's, it's one amount one year, and then you take that amount and the following amount. So if you look at over those four years and you add those individual increases, that's 425 more million, 425 million more dollars now than you were getting four years ago. And I don't think that we have, I don't think that we have a lot to, you know, specifically to show for that. That's a 36% increase. Your teachers are getting 12, so what you're pulling in, you're only giving about a third. We've got to do a better job, keep the taxes lower. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sarah Peacock. I'm also here to talk about millage, and I think that it should be increased to the highest rate that you're able to raise it to at this moment. As you stated, Superintendent Hendricks, the numbers you're considering are historically low, and I'm encouraging you to approve the highest rates possible because we hear over and over again from our faculty and our staff and our parents and our community that the salaries aren't high enough. And every time, we have concerns about having more psychologists and social workers and support staff in schools. We don't have the money for it. And I've met with all the board members except for Stephanie Myers, and everyone except for Stephanie Myers has said that you want to raise salaries as much as you can, but you're limited. Your hands are tied because legislation only allows you to spend certain sums of money. And in the materials you've shared, it says that this money can go to support staff and to cover inflation. So I'm not certain how I can imagine that there is any reason that you wouldn't increase this as much as possible if those are indeed the things you endeavor to do. As to concerns about where the money is going, I mean, it's all out in the sunshine. You can see where every dollar goes, and I don't think anything is getting wasted. If you needed ideas on how to spend extra money, you might find there are 4,600 housing-insecure students in this county. There are almost 400 unaccompanied minors on that list, so you could perhaps consider housing them, along with all the other teachers that are about to lose their homes. So I hope that you do what you all say you want to do. Thank you.
Madam Chair, there are no more speakers for item five.
Thank you so much. Moving forward, I may have a motion to approve item 5.2, the approval of discretionary local effort millage. Motion. I need a motion first. Oh, you're moving for, okay, I have a movement for approval by Ms. Edman. Do I have a second?
Second.
And a second by Mrs. Heim. Ms. Edman, will you please read 5.2, the approval of the discretionary local effort millage?
I move that the board approve the levying of the discretionary local effort millage of 0.748 mils as part of the total millage to be certified to the property appraiser and Florida Department of Revenue.
Is there any board discussion? Seeing none, oh, Mrs. Meyer.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to thank Mr. Smith and team for your time and diligence in preparing this budget. I also want to thank you for taking my calls and discussing the millage rate and budget in more detail with me. I think it's important to acknowledge that although the proposal calls for reduction in the millage rate by .42 percentage rate, this proposal actually equates to an increase of $87 million in local revenue for the district compared to last year, which is just shy of an 11% increase in taxes collected from property owners. Due to the rising cost of insurance, which we've heard many speakers talk about tonight, electricity, groceries, gas, many of the families here in Pinellas are already struggling to make ends meet and are having, and having to make difficult choices and cuts in their own personal budgets. According to the Bureau of Statistics and the Consumer Price Index, our county's inflationary rate is somewhere between 5% to 7.5% on average. Our families, residents, teachers, and staff are contending with unprecedented price increases across the board. Everyone is being forced to make, to do more with less and to make difficult choices. And in the best interest of our taxpayers, I believe so should our local governments. Now is not the time to add yet another double-digit increase to the financial burdens already placed on our citizens. While I agree that a revenue neutral or a full rollback scenario is not possible at this time due to our own rising costs in the district, I do think that we can and we should do better than a 10.87% increase in property taxes imposed on our citizens. My preference would be to find some additional budgetary reductions. Absent of that, I am unable to support the current spending budget proposal. However, I am willing to work with staff to identify, and my colleagues, to identify further areas where we can make reasonable revisions, all while continuing to support our teachers, our staff, and our students. Madam Chair.
Thank you. So any further discussion, the board members? Seeing none, I have a motion and a second for item 5.2 to approve the levying of the discretionary local effort millage of 0.748 mils as part of the total millage to be certified to the property appraiser and Florida Department of Revenue. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed?
No.
There's one, two opposition. So the motion passes five to two. Next, Mrs. Heim, could you please speak on 5.3, the adoption of the total millage rates? Thank you.
I move that the board adopt the millage rate of 5.9380 mils to be set and certified to the property appraiser and to the Florida Department of Revenue. The millage rates are as follows. For required local effort, 3.190 mils. For discretionary local effort, 0.748 mils. For local referendum, 0.500 mils. For capital outlay, 1.500 mils. Total millage, 5.938 mils. This rate is 10.87% higher than the rolled-back rate.
Thank you very much. And we have a second by Mrs. Cook on moving this agenda item forward. Is there any board discussion on 5.3? Seeing none, I have a motion and a second to adopt a millage rate of 5.9380 mils to be set and certified to the property appraiser and to the Florida Department of Revenue. The millage rates are as follows. For local, for required local effort, 3.190 mils. For discretionary local effort, 0.748 mils. For local referendum, 0.500 mils. For capital outlay, 1.500 mils. For a total millage of 5.938 mils. This rate is 10.87% higher than the rolled-back rate. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
No.
And two, no. The motion to approve item 5.3, adopting the millage rate of 5.9380 mils to be set and certified to the property appraiser and to the Florida Department of Revenue, passes with a vote of five to two. And at this time, we're going to have Ms. Jordan, please proceed with the budget presentation.
Thank you, Mrs. Gain. This portion of the presentation covers the district's proposed budget for 2023-24. Budget calendar is ongoing throughout the year. During the course of the year, budget updates are provided at board workshops, and monitoring is performed through budget analyses and forecasts. In the spring, we typically have a better idea of what the legislative budget is providing for us, whether we can expect an increase or a decrease of state funds. Budget steering committee meetings are held during this timeframe primarily for capital outlay requests. In July and September, we hold two public hearings regarding the budget and millage. Tonight is the second of those hearings. The first hearing was held on August 1st. Certain parameters guide the building of the budget. We strive to and have been able to maintain a 63-37 ratio. This means at least 63% of all expenses are for direct instruction or in the classroom, and 37% are related to other areas such as instructional support, plan operations, and administration. Ensured, at least two-thirds of all funding goes toward expenditures in the classroom. We're required by statute to maintain a minimum 3% contingency, while district policy states we're to maintain a minimum 5% contingency. This budget maintains our compliance with district policy. We also budget so as to support our core curriculum and strategic directions. The majority of our budget is in our general fund. This year, it is proposed to be nearly $1.1 billion. The second-largest funding source is capital outlay at $343 million. The district's self-insured health fund is anticipated to be approximately $175 million and represents the district's third-largest fund. The total proposed budget for all funds this year is approximately $1.8 billion. Looking at the budget summary for all revenue sources, you see that about 60% of the total budget comes from the general fund. Capital outlay accounts for approximately 19%. The combined total of these two funds comprises nearly 79% of our entire budget. The new year brings several legislative changes. The base student allocation, or BSA, increased to $5,139.73. This is an increase of $552.33, or 12% over last year's BSA. Absent the collapse of certain categoricals, the comparable year-over-year increase to the BSA would be equivalent to $112.62. Statewide, funding increased by $2.3 billion, $75 million to Pinellas, which includes funding related to family empowerment scholarships. Changes in the Florida retirement system contribution rate are projected to increase district expenditures by about $9 million. The teacher salary increase allocation increased $253 million, or $33.8 million, to Pinellas. A $40 million statewide increase has been appropriated for safe schools. The increase to Pinellas is $432,000. A state-funded discretionary supplement of $436 million has been obligated to mitigate the impact of family impairment scholarship on district's funding. This is a non-recurring funding source. The total operating fund resources are anticipated to be nearly $1.1 billion. Of that, about $634 million comes from local sources, which includes the half-mil referendum. $290 million comes from state sources. The Florida Education Finance Program, or FEFP, is the general fund's primary funding source. The FEFP funding formula uses a combination of state and local resources to fund education. Looking at the operating revenue budget graphically, you'll note that local sources represent about 60% of the total operating budget, and state sources account for approximately 27%. The remaining 13% comes from transfers and fund balance. The operating budget is used to fund the day-to-day operating expenditures of the district. It pays for salaries and benefits, supplies and materials, textbooks, student transportation, utilities, maintenance, and repairs. Viewing the distribution of our operating budget by object, there is little change from previous years. About 58% of our budget is spent on salaries and 22% on benefits. In total, 80% of our operating budget goes towards staffing. Capital outlay funds include revenue from both state and local sources. This fund reflects the revenue and expenditures for construction and renovation of school buildings and grounds. The majority of these funds are generated by the local capital improvement millage, which is set by law and limited at 1.5 mils. These funds may not be used for operating purposes; rather, they may only be used for capital outlay purposes as advertised. PICO funds are not expected this year for traditional district schools. Additional funds have been provided through certificate of participation, or COPS bonds. The lease purchase financing of capital improvements through the issuance of COPS bonds is a technique frequently utilized by Florida school districts to finance school Our proposed capital outlay budget is approximately $343 million. This budget reflects $217 million in new revenue. This budget reflects two hundred seventeen million dollars in new revenue and three hundred eight million dollars in proposed appropriations. The special revenue budget is comprised of two major categories of federal funds, contracted programs, and food service. The total contracted programs budget is approximately ninety-five million dollars. This budget starts the year off low and builds as the year goes on as we don't recognize the revenue until it is available. Included in this category are the Corona virus, Corona Aid Relief and Economic Security Act, the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Act, and the American Rescue Plan Grants. These grants are also referred to as CARES, ESER, and ARP. It's important to note, these grants are limited, non-recurring revenue sources. Food service is a self-sustaining fund as it receives no financial support from the operating fund. Federal reimbursements and local collections are the primary revenue sources. The proposed food service budget is approximately seventy-three million dollars. The debt service fund is used to account for the payment of general long-term debt, principal, and interest. This eight point five million dollar budget represents the debt service for COPS bonds issued by the district in two thousand seventeen and two thousand twenty-one. The proposed self-insurance workers' compensation and liability budget of five point five million dollars accounts for the premium revenue and expenditures associated with the district's self-insured workers' compensation and liability insurance programs. The self-insured health fund accounts for the district's premium revenue and claim expenditures with a budget of approximately one hundred seventy-five million dollars. The proposed budget and all supporting documents are on file in the Office of Budget and Resource Allocation. This information can also be found online. At this point, I'll turn the meeting back to the board chair to allow for public comment and the motions necessary to adopt the proposed budget. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Howke, are there any speakers for agenda item six?
Yes, Madam Chair, for item six, we have five speakers. The first two are Mark Clutho and Dylan Dames.
Mark Clutho Largo. Capital outlay, three hundred and forty-three million. But it doesn't say anything like that here. And you noticed that in some obscure publication, probably less than one-tenth of one percent of the population here would ever have noticed that this hearing is happening today? I don't think that's very wise. But school board, three million two hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars obscene. And school administration, sixty-four million, six hundred and forty-five thousand. Oh, boy. Facilities acquisition and construction, two hundred million. And I hear the teachers crying. Give us the money. We need more money. Well, you know, I've said this many meetings before. Winston Churchill, September twelfth, nineteen sixty, we shape our buildings. Thereafter, they shape us. Well, see, you're taking all this money. You're budgeting all this money, and you're making these stupid dumb buildings that are belching carbon and burning money. It couldn't possibly go to paying teacher salaries. Now, over twenty years, I've been saying this. High-performance passive solar buildings. And not one teacher has ever said, "Put us and the students in these healthy money save, money-saving buildings, providing for the future that you continue to ignore." This budget in a word is malfeasance. Ignoring science. Of course, you don't.
Dylan Dames.
Good afternoon, School Board. My name is Dylan Dames. I'm with Faith in Florida. We represent impacted people and housed and housed I work around. Housing and criminal justice, this is my first time coming to one of these. I'm excited to see all of the work we do forward. I just want to stand here in solidarity with teachers, unionized and unionized, that are struggling. I have a friend, Ben Joseph. He has just left his job in public education. He was not nearly making enough money for the kind of harassment that he faced as a trans man from students. I'm sorry. It's my bad. For the kind of harassment he was facing from students, as well as pressure from parents, escalated by some of the same book banning that we were talking about earlier. Ren, I'd pick him up, and he'd have a bunch of things fall out of his bag. He's taking work home all the time. He's buying his own organizers, carrying his own supplies into classrooms so that he can make do with the little that he has. And ultimately, I believe that Ren would have stayed, even, even facing the pressure of not earning enough money. I think he would have stayed if it weren't such a tough environment. I think our teachers are facing a lot of social pressure. But then to also not make a livable wage is, it, it multiplies that a lot. So I'm here in solidarity with all the teachers and just want to let you know, this is not the last you'll be seeing of me. I'm very honored to be in this space, and thank you for what you're doing. And I just urge you to keep teacher salaries a priority in all your budget proceedings going forward. Thank you.
The next two speakers are Bronson Odechoff and Lindsay Blankenbaker.
Hello again. So I just wanted to take another chance to talk a little bit about the budget aspect of the one point seven plus billion-dollar budget. And in the meeting last month, we did, I think it was mentioned that, that that is, that is, it's a large sum, right? It's a, it's a, it's a large budget. And the idea was is to kind of go back and maybe look at the budget and make some recommendations on where we could reduce spending. So unfortunately, I don't have a lot of suggestions. And one of the reasons because what's really hard, the way that the budget is structured, it's really hard because it's structured into different categories, and you'd have to randomly, you know, cut a percentage out of this category, a percentage out of that category. And I don't think that that's a very, you know, I don't think it's a very effective way to just blanket cut across things. You really need to look in depth at programs and make sure that, you know, the, the programs that we're spending money on are, are what we want to. There's, there's two ways that you can kind of go shopping, if you, if you want to use a grocery store metaphor. You can go through and get all the stuff that you want and pile it all in the cart. And if you're the government, then you can just take that price tag and you can put it on to the taxpayers' shoulder for them to carry. But a lot of families have to kind of do it the opposite way. You don't get to get everything in your cart that you want. You have a limit on what you can spend, and so you have to put some, aside some good things because you really want to focus on the great things. And I think that's really kind of what we need our focus to be. Now, I don't have any solutions, but I don't like to come and look at a problem without maybe offering some ideas. So I wanted to maybe make three suggestions on where we could focus. I think the first thing that we need to do is ask more questions. We need to know, what is the lowest amount of tax that we could charge? Like, what's the lowest amount that we could get a buy and still, still match funds, right? We look at 401K, you match what your employer can give you. What could we match from the state? What's that lowest amount? And then maybe what, what can we look at to stay under that spending amount? I think a finance advisory board would be a great idea for, for the school board to get the, to get the ideas from other citizens who are actually, you know, can, and have good ideas and, and solutions. You know, three minutes just doesn't really give you a lot to talk about, and you don't really have the resources to dive in to really come up with ideas. And then take a look at that strategic plan. We adopted a strategic plan today. It'd be, it'd be great to see what all those objectives cost and then see if you really want to spend that money for that objective. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Lindsay Blankenbaker. I'm the Executive Director of P C T A and P S P A. To start, I'd like to state that my forthcoming comments are all made out of respect. I want to praise the thoughtfulness and the diligence with which this budget is developed or has been developed. It's complex. A budget, any, any budget is, but certainly a budget this large is complex to predict, to monitor, and towards the end to reconcile. I respect the work of, of our leadership and our staff in the Finance Department. Contract negotiations are also complex, and I encourage you, even though I, I have heard or certainly get the sense that you've been told that you should not, you should. You should be watching our bargaining sessions, watch the live streams, look at those discussions. They themselves are complex. And in both, in both processes, care is paramount. Conservation is part of that. Certainly, we acknowledge it. School board policy, as the finance staff discussed, is to maintain a, a general fund reserve or contingency of five percent. That is nearly two times the state requirement. Again, that's not required by law. That is the school board policy, and it's understandable. But to that end, the district has allocated or budgeted ten percent to the general fund reserve over the last several years. And respectfully, policy is only as good as it is practical. It's only as good as it is responsive to the realities that we all live and work with now. That reality has our educators, our teachers, and our support staff coping with over seven percent inflation rate locally, specific to Pinellas. That is higher than almost anywhere else in the state or even in the country, and it's compounding over ten percent inflation in our area last year. That has led to a rise in homelessness or housing instability, food instability, and that's driving educators out of our community and out of our schools. But their reality is, has to be your reality. Their shortage has to be your shortage. It's your contingency. This is the contingency that we've been planning for. You and your priorities and your choices must change this if we are to keep our schools great. Our Pinellas County Schools budget should reflect a move away from holding too tightly or hoarding funds and towards valuing and keeping our educators. Again, respectfully, today, we should free the reserve, think creatively versus conservatively about our budgeting policies and practices, our capital borrowing and transfers versus, and, and direct those funds towards keeping our educators in our schools. Our budget should not be a piggy bank, but it should be an exercise in your prioritize, priorities. Please prioritize your people. Thank you.
The next speaker is Sarah Peacock.
Hi, it's me again. I'm not done yet. I'm glad that the people that I disagree with about the budget are here. I think it's important to have this discussion, and I'm glad that you're showing up, even if I don't agree with you. But I do disagree with you, especially in your characterization of the budget. Not you personally, but it's what I hear a lot when I hear about government budgets. The government's not like your family, and it's not like your business. As a society, we have needs. We need an educated electorate. It is this board's job to figure out how much money you need to achieve that. And then it's our job as a group, as a community, as a society, to raise that amount of money. Education is the bedrock of our democracy, and we don't have a teacher shortage. We have a salary and wage shortage. Teachers and support staff deserve to live comfortably and have access to robust, robust medical insurance. And our teachers should not have to buy their own materials. Our administration should not have to beg for support staff. It's your job to provide those things. So it's not a matter of going to a grocery store and picking out all the things we like. It's a matter of, we need those things. We're already not getting them. So it is your job to raise that money and give it to the people who need it to have the next generation be able to function in this society because they are currently handicapped. Thank you.
Madam Chair, there are no more speakers.
Thank you very much. May I have a motion for item six point two, the approval of the final budget for two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four?
I move that the board approve the final twenty-three, twenty-four budget as presented.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Edmond. Is there any board discussion on six point two? Seeing then I have a motion by Mrs. Long and a second by Ms. Edmond to adopt the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four budget as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? One opposition. So the motion to approve item six point two, approval of the final budget for two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four, passes six to one. Thank you. And may I have a motion for item six point three, adoption of the resolution determining revenues and millages levied?
Madam Chair, I move that the board adopt the required resolution as presented without formal reading.
I've moved by Mrs. Peters. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second by Mrs. Cook. Is there any discussion on item six point three? Seeing then I have a motion, a second, to adopt item six point three, the adoption of resolution determining revenues and millages levied. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? One no. The motion to approve six point three, adoption of resolution determining revenues and millages levied, passes six to one. Thank you very much. There being no additional business regarding the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four millages and budget, I adjourn this meeting of the public hearing on the budget.